Good Lord, thank you for allowing us to be here this evening to conduct the business at the schools and to take care of the kids of Loudoun County, good Lord, and be with the sports as they make the best decisions as we move forward into this upcoming school year. In your name we pray. Amen.
Glad to lead, just through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, for which it stands, one nation, united, individual, for the liberty and justice for all.
Graft of meetings, more meetings.
Any questions on the minutes?
Any questions? No. That was May the 14th, 2020. Coach approvals.
Since our last meeting, we've had three submitted by principals. We have an assistant girls soccer coach for Loudoun Middle School, assistant boys basketball coach at Loudoun Middle School, and then an assistant football coach at Loudoun High School. Their athletic directors and principals have submitted their names and they have their background checks.
Okay, and two of those are paid and one is not correct?
Correct. And they'll file on the established scale that once they turn in their experience to the HR department, then they'll put them on the scale where they go.
Are they head coaches or assistant coaches?
Any questions? The E&amp;A Boy Services contract, Mr. Garrett.
E&amp;A handles all of our communication within the school, all of our school phones and things of that nature. We have had a contract with him in the past. It's time to review that contract. It's a three-year contract renewal, so that's why I brought it before the board. The only addition to the contract is we have added the, there's an app where teachers can use that app to call kids at home. So like when we had a closure in the spring, we added that app so teachers could use that to communicate with kids. And that's the only addition. So I'd recommend that we approve that when we get to the meeting. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. Pretty much same contracts we've had, just the addition of that app for teachers to better communicate with kids.
Any questions, good Lord, your recommendation?
Any trouble with them?
Excuse me?
Have you had any trouble with them?
No, sir.
Is this not for your cell phones or stuff?
No, sir. This is the in-house communication within the district. Everything's over the internet. All the E&amp;As, all our phone services over there.
Budget amendments.
Mr. Presley?
All right, we got two rounds of, two funds of budget amendments this month, 141 and 143. This is the new fiscal year, so I printed off every single page of 141, so I know it's longer than usual. I did that just so you'd have a copy of what commission approved the entire budget, but going forward, I'll just print off the pages that were affected. So a lot of these pages will be blank with no amendments, but I mainly just did that so you have a copy of the full budget. We'll start with 141. As you know, when we started our budget, when we approved it, the BEP was higher than what it ended up being. And so on page five of our revenue in 141, you'll see the first, or page three, excuse me, you'll see the reduction of BEP money. That's state money. The governor took out the increases for salaries, so that's a loss of $245,000 from our state BEP money. So I took that out on the front end on page three, and you'll see that coming out of fund balance once we get to the last page. That's the only revenue that I changed. Page five starts the expenditures. This month, we're making some changes and moving around funding so that we can buy supplies and equipment for the COVID safety things. Mike's going to talk a little bit more about that.
Yeah, I just, what we're doing, what I asked Chad to do is if we had some money in textbooks and we are, we didn't have enough money to purchase the full adoption, so I'm moving that money to be able to buy some things to make the schools safer for the reopening. A lot of the things that we're going to buy, I feel like I can get a partial reimbursement back from FEMA. So when we get that win, and if we get that reimbursement back, then we'll move that back to the textbook line item. They're supposed to do like a 75-25 on certain items, not everything, but I'm looking at buying some additional hand sanitizer dispensers or stands to put those on where we can put them in the schools where we want them. I'm looking at, on top of what our custodial service does, I'm looking at buying some electrostatic sprayers where we can spray disinfectant in some high-contact areas in classrooms, and that stays longer than just traditional cleaning. On top of what the custodial service is doing, then we'll need disinfectant to go with that, supplies. I would also like to buy an air purifier for each classroom. That's a pretty hefty expense, but I feel like I can get that partially reimbursed as well, and I think that's a worthwhile expenditure if the board agrees.
What's the cost?
We're still waiting on a price of about $200 apiece, and I'll need about $400, so that's $80,000. But hopefully, I can get $60,000 of that back. Not guaranteed. When we spend it, we've got to assume that we may not get it, but I feel fairly confident we can.
So that we want in every classroom?
That's what I want to happen. Yes, sir. And then need some additional cafeteria tables to get our every other seat spacing that you'll see in the reopening plan. We've got some classrooms that have tables where the principals want to change those to desks so we can get some better spacing, so that's in there. And both of those purchases are about $30,000 apiece for cafeteria tables and then for desks where we're going to need those. Then I'm looking at spending some additional money on cleaning supplies, hand sanitizer. I have hand sanitizer. You can't find it hardly anywhere, but we have it and enough to start off the school year and make it a pretty good ways, and I feel like I've got a source when we run out to get more. It's just, right now, I need dispensers. You know, when you go to the store, sometimes there's things you can find and sometimes you can't find, and we're in the same boat, but we're trying to get those things ordered. And then just some, for instance, we're turning off the water fountains as a safety protocol, so we're wanting to buy the water bottle fillers. We can hook those up to the water fountains. We've got those in most of the schools where you just put your, where they bring the water bottle and fill those up. They're about $350 apiece, and I want to buy about 20 more of those to put in different schools to make sure we've got that taken care of. And then some additional fans to do some circulation, like within cafeterias and things like that, to get air circulation. So all of us, I'm moving all of that money so I can have some money to purchase those safety things that we wouldn't normally buy, but I'm hoping that we can get a good portion of that money back, and then when we do, we can move it back into textbooks.
You were saying something about doing the spraying the schools?
Yes.
Is that something that we're doing, or sales or the janitor companies doing?
That's something, the custodial service is going to do that too. We can get in that in a few minutes. We met with the custodial service this week, and they're going to rework their schedule, try to rework their schedule, where they can pull some folks off night shift to put on day shift, so they can meet our expectations for like cleaning bathrooms more frequently, common areas more frequently, and things like that. Now, we may have an additional expense with that at some point, because there may be some schools that don't have the staffing where they can pull that, but we haven't got that far down the road yet. But on top of that, we're buying these sprayers. Number one, the sprayers are going to be used by the bus contractor, so every bus will be sprayed daily with those or every three days. I think it lasts what, three days? But we'll do the frequency sprayer there. And then I'm getting one, a big one for like front office, nurses clinic, the high-contact areas to be sprayed. And then there's some handheld sprayers that I'm hoping to get for like each wing in the school, so that the teachers can spray, spray down their classroom, the desk, and the door, doorknobs, and all that stuff, you know, every couple, couple times a week, because it, like I said, it lasts longer.
Chlorine-based type, do you know?
No, I don't think so. I'm not exactly sure what it is. We've looked at, there's several systems that are using that. It's similar to, I think, to what they use when they do the ambulances and things like that, when they, when they spray those down.
Does it leave a resin on everything? Because I know that chlorine base leaves resin on stuff. It's hard to get it up after.
Yeah. And we're still, still learning with this as well, but that's, that's what we're looking for, to spend that money on, things like that. And of course, it's a moving target as we go, and we're still, you know, like today, there were additional items that we thought of that we needed. So that allows me some money to purchase those, so we can start getting them in. You know, if you approve this tonight, then I'll start buying that stuff tomorrow. Some of the sprayers, we actually bought back in late May, early June for the buses, and then that vendor has delayed shipments, so Chad found another vendor today with the same sprayer that can get it here supposedly before school starts. So if we don't get them in in time, then we'll use other cleaners to make some. And this is on top of what the custodial contractor's doing. This is just an extra layer. This is something that we necessarily won't do every year, so this wouldn't be a recurring expense necessarily, but right now, for where we're at, I feel like it's important to do as much. And I think that even though they're cleaning, not everybody always sees them cleaning, so I feel like if I was a teacher and I could, you know, do my own every so often, on top of knowing that they've done it, then that makes me feel a little bit better.
So these are pieces that teachers are going to?
That can, yes, that they, yes.
I know some of those chemicals they use, and those you can't go back in the building for like.
Yeah, I don't think this is the.
We'll have an ingredients list for these as well. That way, if you need those.
Just a little DDT in there?
Yeah.
So teachers will be doing their own rooms and stuff then?
The custodial crew will be doing everything, but on top of that, we're going to ask teachers to do extras. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah. No, that's great. That's, appreciate that.
All right, so that's the reduction in expenditures, and I'll show you later on where we're moving it to in order to purchase those things. The next amendment's on page nine. This is for the SAFE grant, the safety grant that we get every single year. We will get additional funding later this year. This is what was left over from last year. We're rebudgeting that. We didn't spend it all last year. They gave us the opportunity. I think we have three to six more months to spend it, so I'm rebudgeting that so that we can, that we can spend those funds. Page. 15 is the next, the next page. We received a lot of donations in June last year. As you know, our fiscal year ends June 30th, so when we receive donations in June, we really can't do anything with it except put it in the account. So once we put it in the account, we have to budget that somehow, and that's what I'm doing with multiple donations. This first one was, was $5,000. And this one came from, I don't know if you need to know, but it came from the Rotary Club here, and we'll be using that for safety supplies at North Middle, and then also a remind app for Loudoun Elementary. That way, they can get stuff out to their, their parents a little bit easier for each classroom. You guys have any questions so far?
That's not the, that's the one.
That's the Rotary Grant, yes, sir.
TBA match, yes, sir.
Yes, it is.
Yeah. See, everything that we see, we receive right at the end of the year. We've got to come back and pull it, because it rolled in, so we've got to pull it back out so we can use it for what we intended it.
Page 19 is the next one, and it's with our FRC department, Family Resource Center. We received a donation of $8,000 in June, so we're pulling that back out so that we can spend that. That's for families. They, they donated that for clothing for students, and so that's, that's where we'll budget that, and where Cindy Purdy will pay those expenditures out of.
Who donated that?
That one came from Good Neighbor Shop. Page 21, this is the expenditures for all the, all the things that Mr. Garrett went over, all the things he's wanted to purchase for, for safety as we reopen schools. Part of that is coming from the money that I reduced on the first couple pages. As you know, we did get growth money this year from commission, $36,000.
How much?
$36,000. And that is our growth money for the year, so we are spending, we are going to budget that in this area as well. That was not, that was not in our original budget when you guys passed it, so I'm adding it in now. Last page, 22, is just showing you where fund balance is. We kind of went over this with the, when we passed the budget. The bottom line is obviously not the bottom line. It doesn't include, it doesn't include the 2% that we typically roll. So that number is extremely low, but as we've kind of went over in the past months, that number will be higher once, once audits come back and all of that. That's 141. You guys have any questions about that? 143 is also in here, and that is from donations. There were two donations, the TBA and Loudoun Utilities, and it was specifically donated for food distribution. So we are putting that into salaries. There's a lot of employees that are working extra during this month in order to pass out meals.
We're right at about 170,000 meals since we started in, in late March.
So that's what that donation will go toward, is to help pay for, for their salaries and the work that they're doing. That's all the amendments here. Are there any questions? Kenny, I'd like to talk about the next one too, if you don't, if you don't mind.
Excuse me. That would be the unpaid bills at North Middle School.
Yeah. I don't, I apologize for the, for the title there. That's my fault. It's probably negative, unpaid bills. It's actually accounts payable. It probably looks bad on North Middle, but it is not a bad thing. We get our audit every year with the schools. One thing that they, they don't have to do, but we try to do this, is to make sure that everything is paid at the school level before the audit happens. This year, it did not happen at North Middle. There's three vendors there that was printed off by the auditor that were not paid. These are considered accounts payable. School system, our budget and the school budget, we're not allowed to carry debt from year to year. Accounts payable is considered debt. So based on the school, internal school manual, the board has to approve these, mainly saying that we are carrying debt. I will tell you that these, I'll tell you what these items are. There's the yearbooks. North Middle still hadn't received their yearbooks at this time, so they're not going to pay them until they get the yearbooks. The last two items, Amazon and SunTrust, are some items that they purchased for the outdoor classroom up there. I know Fort Loudoun and North are doing outdoor classrooms, but they ordered some things that still haven't come in, so they're waiting to pay those as well.
They have the money to pay it.
Yeah. All the items you see on here will be paid, but it's more of a formality. Do you guys have to approve this, and I have to show that to the auditor? This hardly ever happens, but sometimes the bookkeeper will actually pay before we get the items, just so they'll have it all paid before the audit. So I honestly would like to see more of these, because a lot of times, we're paying things too early. But, so that's what these are. Do you have any questions or concerns about these?
Did you mess up on anything else?
I don't know. This is not an audit finding, by the way. A lot of people will look at this and say they probably got a finding for this. No, they did not. Like Mr. Garrett said, it will be, it will be paid, so. All right, that's all I have.
All right. Next one is the telehealth discussion, Mr. Garrett.
Yes, I had a board member approach me about wanting to look into telehealth services for students. We have telehealth services for our staff currently through five points. I wanted some, this is just discussion, is that something that the board is interested? To give you an example, the gentleman that come and talked to me, for instance, would provide the equipment in our clinics at no charge to us, and then essentially where they make their money is off the insurance for the kids. So like if we've got a child that comes into the clinic and is not feeling well, and so the parent having to take them to the doctor if they didn't want to, the parent could sign a consent and have them receive the telehealth services, and then the telehealth company would, we wouldn't do any of that without the parent's consent, obviously. But I had, I was asked to bring the information, because that's what I'm doing. Do you want me to invite him or other telehealth providers to a workshop to discuss that information with you? Is that, I just want to see if it's something you all were interested in before I had somebody come out. Like I said, I'm, I'm doing this, not on accord, but I don't disagree that it's a bad idea. I think North City does something similar. Several school systems do things similar. I can see where it can be convenient for parents, but you know, we have a lot going on anyway, but I serve the pleasure of board. Whatever you guys want to do. If you want to hear more information on it, or if you want to hear additional providers other than this one person that come and talk to me, it's, it's up to you guys. I'm just looking for some direction.
Questions?
Well, I guess my thought is, is, you know, we have it in my school, and I like it. But, you know, I don't know if that's something that parents are really big on. I don't know if you could put out, maybe Jennifer could create some kind of survey and send it out, and ask parents if that would be something that they'd be interested in, because if you're doing it for kids, I know teachers like it. Teachers use it. But, you know, I don't know if parents would do that because pediatricians, you know, so I don't know what.
And we can, and I will tell you that our, our medical director was not real excited about doing that.
He was not excited about doing it?
No, I mean, you know, if you're a pediatrician, you're going to want a kid to come see you instead of doing it.
Strictly money.
You know what I'm saying? But, but like I said, that's, and we can do a survey. I don't know that I want to do a survey right now with everything else going on, just because I'm afraid that may, make people think we're trying to do something that, that I'm, you know, that's not something, so.
What kind of cost is it?
It's no cost to us. It's, they build the insurance, like.
Oh, I know.
That's how they make their money. They don't make any money off of us, and that's why I said, you know, he's come and talked to me, but I'm sure there's other places that do that too, and I just didn't want to, you know, I wanted to know what the board thought about.
What insurance company are they building?
Whoever the kid, whatever the parent's insurance, yeah.
The parent's insurance.
Yes. Be just like he went to the, to the regular doctor.
Who's gathering all that insurance information?
That would be that company. And they'd have to get parental, the parents would have to agree to that, to use that service and to give them the insurance information. If the parent didn't agree, the kid couldn't use it.
So they keep the information upfront?
Yes.
Okay.
I think everything going on right now, that's just.
Table.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm fine with that. Like I said, I'm.
They don't have to worry if they're in, they're in their own, their group, or their insurance, or some places that won't pay. I just think that's a big.
That's what I needed to know.
That's just my opinion. I just want to.
Because, I mean.
Well, you know, I think there's a, there'll be a tendency to try to, is this linked to the COVID situation?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I.
So maybe revisit this toward December, maybe, to see how things, or just see how things are going, and then if, if you all want to revisit, you can let me know. And that's why I didn't put it on the meeting agenda. I just wanted to fill out where you guys want me to go with that.
I don't mean to put Kim on the spot. Did, was, do the kids use it a lot there where you're at?
I think it is available for the kids. I don't know how many kids actually use it. I would have to ask the nurse.
Kind of hard to tell, but.
But, well, I don't know, you know, how many kids use it, but I can tell you that teachers wear it out, you know, because it's easier, you know.
Quick clinic they have.
It's a quick clinic, and, you know, I can go in there instead of saying, hey, listen, I'm going to be late, you know, a couple of hours.
My, my initial concern with it right now was I feel like our, our clinics are going to have a pretty good workload starting off, and I don't want to throw something else on top of my nurses right now, is my, but I want to do what the board wants to do as well, so. So I'll hold off on, on that till.
And I'll ask to see how many kids actually, I don't know, I don't know the answer to that, Craig, but I'll ask and see if it's highly used.
And then I liked your idea. At some point in the school year, we can do a survey where it doesn't link back to what we're trying to do now.
Because if you're wanting it for kids, then parents probably need to give that input, because if they say no, then there's no reason to.
And just to be quite honest, we're, we're stretched for time too, so that's one less thing that we would have to, have to deal with at the moment, so that's appreciated.
Everybody? All right. We don't say much. Request for overnight field trip.
The, I would recommend that we table this. This was taken prior to the governor's order, so if the governor's order stays in effect, this activity will not take place anyway. It's a girls' soccer tournament, and it's, it's before August 30th, and that the governor's order extends to August 30th. If something happens within the order, I can bring this back to the board before the, before the, we will have one or two more meetings before this takes place, so you can act on it then, unless you want to do something differently. Again, I'm good either way.
I like your idea.
Questions? Esser Grant.
Esser Grant, the state approved our grant. Now, I'm going to tell you what's, what's in it, but I'm going to turn around and then I'm going to tell you. I'm fixing to amend it, because things are moving real fast in life right now, and when we applied for that, for instance, in the, in the grant, we've got some equipment to take kids' temperatures. Okay? Well, the state's providing us with non-contact thermometers now, so there's no need for me to spend that money. There's some other things that we need to move around, going back to like what I said with the FEMA reimbursement. If I buy something out of Esser, I can't get any back from FEMA, so I'm trying to buy things out of Esser that, like laptops. FEMA won't give us any money on that, so I'd rather use this money for that, and then use our money for things that I can get money back on. Does that make sense to make our dollar go further? So we'll be doing some amendments before the next meeting, but I do need you to approve this tonight so we can start spending out of it. But essentially, we've got some, some tech training in there to get our teachers ready for starting the year, in, in the event we have to go remote at some point, and I want everybody trained to be able to feel comfortable doing that, so there's some money in here for that. And essentially, what that is, the first week of school, we'll be doing some tech training to make sure that comfortable, that teachers are comfortable being able to deliver that instruction remotely, but it'll be like a train-to-trainer model. So we're going to bring teachers in to train them at each school before school starts, and then have them, the first week of school, train the other teachers. So they'll be working out a contract, so there's some money in there for that. There's some money in there for our virtual program, which I'll talk about in the, in the opening plan. Right now, what we're looking at is the Florida Virtual Program, and I'll explain a little bit more about that when we get to the, that could change, but right now, that's, that's where we're at on that one. Zoom and CSIL, which would both be used in the event of a temporary closure for teachers to teach their classes. The E&amp;A app that we just talked about a few minutes ago, that would be paid out of the Esser Grant. We've got iPads and laptops in there, iPads for K-2, laptops for 312, cases for the iPads, cases for the laptops, so when we send them home, they're better protected. And then we're looking at maybe doing some additional access points in school parking lots. Based on the survey we did, there wasn't as much demand for that as I thought there would be, but I think there are some places that that would be beneficial, so we won't need as much money for that as I have budgeted, so I'll move some of it, but we'll still do some of those. And then we need some additional food carts for, for doing grab-and-go breakfasts in the mornings as part of our reopening plan. So all of that was written to, and that's that federal grant that we got to help assist us with some COVID-related expenses. So those are the things that are in that grant, but like I said, you'll see an amendment on it the next meeting to, to make sure that we're maximizing our dollars. Like yesterday, the state put out another technology grant, so we'll try to make sure that we maximize the way we spend our money. You know, I want to get the most for the dollar that we can, and if you spend out of this pot, sometimes you get money back. Spend out of this, you can't. You just got to make sure that you're getting all that, that worked out. So that's what I'm doing.
If you amend the grant, do you have to tell?
The state will have to approve, the state will have to approve the amendment, but I'm hoping that we can get it amended and get state approval before the next meeting so that you all can approve it as well. Yes, I have to have a lot of state approval on a lot of things, and they push a lot of things out. Any questions on that?
All right, we're all over. The reopening plan, Mr. Garrett.
We have, let me start by saying, there is no way to have a plan that makes everybody happy, because it's just not going to happen, as much as we try. But we have tried to do the best we can to come up with a plan that we feel like makes the kids as safe as possible within the constraints that we have. makes the kids as safe as possible within the constraints that we have. And with this COVID pandemic, we are essentially mitigating risks. You cannot eliminate it anywhere you go, but you can try your best to mitigate what you're, what you're doing. So we have, uh, given a community survey, we had 2,200 people respond to that, which I thought was a good, good response. Uh, 200 teachers responded. We had, uh, showed the plan and got feedback from principals. We did a focus group of parents from each school to get some feedback after we had developed the plan. Uh, focus group of teachers, uh, we've got input from a couple of local doctors, Department of Health. There was 25 state, uh, templates that put out, and then, uh, I've also talked with other systems to kind of see what they're doing to make sure that, that we're all, all aligned. And, uh, including Lenore City, I've worked very close with Dr. Barker the last few weeks, and I believe they approved their plan earlier today that is very, very similar to what I'm proposing here tonight, so we can kind of be consistent with kids that are, that are shared. Uh, I feel like we're doing, uh, some extra things, like I just talked about, moving that money. Uh, I don't know that all the systems are going to buy an air purifier and different things like that, or try to do things like that, but I feel like that if the board feels like that's something, that's important. Uh, to walk through the, the reopening plan, we'll have two options, and, and let me say too, this constantly changes, uh, because the guidelines constantly change. Like we got some, some additional information, uh, last week on, uh, the virtual instruction piece. So, um, I'm going to have to ask the board to meet again in two weeks, uh, from tonight. We have to, Monday, the state opened up a, uh, it's called a continuous learning plan, where they have to approve our plan for virtual instruction and remote instruction. So that's what we're working on now. Uh, so in a couple of weeks, I'll need you to vote on that because it's due the 24th, so we have to turn it in for state approval, and the 24th, state has to approve what we're, what we're doing. Uh, in our reopening plan, we have two options. The first one is traditional daily instruction, in-person at the school, with the safety protocols that we'll talk about on down through the plan that we're putting in place. The second is a, is a virtual school, and I want to talk about that just a second, because there's two things going on here. If we have kids that essentially intend to stay out of school or not come back to the building for the year, then that's what we're looking at is the virtual school piece. The remote learning piece is going to be if we have to have temporary shutdowns throughout the year, which I'm hoping we don't, uh, and I'll talk about that shortly too. But that, like the temporary, the remote learning, we're going to use the Zoom and Microsoft Teams, where teachers would actually teach the kids like they were going through their classes while they're, they're at home. It would be more or less a live instruction. Uh, if they didn't have internet, we would record that on a flash drive and, and do it that way to provide the instruction and the support. The virtual school, which is the whole year thing, we're, we're looking at Florida Virtual Program, which is used throughout, a lot of systems in the state use it, I think Lenore City is using that as well. So they provide the content and the curriculum, and then we just have a teacher, it's like you're working through modules, and then we have a teacher that would, would support that. But the state's guidelines that they put out last week is for virtual school, it still has to be six and a half hours of instruction, so the, the child has to do six and a half hours. That's going to be tough, uh, on the virtual piece. I mean, that, that, I mean, it's an option, but I'm just saying it's, it's going to be a, a tough option. We have to take attendance, so how would, how we would take attendance is looking at how much time they spend on the program, have they turning in their work, and then like a daily check-in with, with the teacher. So like if, if Kim doesn't complete her work for that day and we're not showing any time logged in, in the system, or she doesn't, or the, didn't get talks, then you're absent. So I mean, you could end up in truancy from virtual schools, is what I'm trying to say. It's tou, almost tougher than, than the in-school option, in my opinion, in some ways, but for some kids, that's going to be the best option. If we've got medically fragile kids or, or kids that, uh, have, have immune issues, that may be the best option for them. I don't want to lose any kids, but, you know, if, if we've got, uh, kids that don't feel comfortable coming back traditionally, which I hope they will after they see our plan, and don't think they can handle the structure of the virtual school, then they may want to homeschool. You know, I don't want kids to do that, because I'd like to keep them, but I mean, that is, you know, another option, because there's virtual options within homeschool.
We don't get credit for the homeschools?
No, we do not.
Do we get credit for the virtual?
Yes, yes. But essentially what the state's saying, if you can't mimic a school day, we're not going to approve it. You know, and like, uh, and we're going to need, and they'll need internet access for that, because we've, we're told today that the flash drive idea we've got, they will more than likely approve for our short-term closures, like two weeks or months, or if we're doing the Zoom thing, but for the, for the virtual school, they want it, uh, constant. So that's a, that's a snag that we hit today. We're all the time hitting something and then trying to figure out how to work around it. And we'll keep looking into that, but that's what we ran into, to today. So for instance, with the virtual, just to give you an idea with the, with the virtual, uh, what we're looking at is, Jennifer, can you help me out just a minute on some of those? If you, if you just tell them a little bit about the virtual school?
Florida Virtual, we lead purchase content from them as part of the learning modules. They have a cost law that aligns with the Tennessee standards. But we have teachers in Loudoun County schools that are actually in charge of that group of students. They are on record as being their students, they check in with them daily, they monitor their work, they grade their work, they provide feedback and structure and office hours and remediation. They actually put the grades in Steiners, so even though they're home in virtual, they're, they're still our students. And our teachers are the ones monitoring and providing feedback and grading work and taking care of those students.
Which teachers do it, though?
Okay.
Which teacher gets credit for it? I mean, as far as teacher.
And that, and that's where I'm headed next. This option is also going to be cost to the system. You know, I don't know how much yet, uh, but we're going to have to either pay some teacher stipends to manage that outside of what they're doing, or, um, you know, hire teachers to manage that as well, or both. Because what's going to happen is if, say we had five second, five third graders from each elementary school in the county that decide they want to do that, well, that's 30 kids. Well, if I pull five out of each classroom, I've not freed up a teacher, so I'm going to have to hire one. You see what I'm saying?
But all the presentation of lessons are coming from this Florida.
From the, yes.
All the modules.
Now, that, that's for the full virtual thing. If we have to go remote from a closure, then that's different. That's our teachers teaching the kids that we're sitting in their classrooms, either with Zoom or Teams, and we can use the flash drives for that, which was our original plan, that's still going to be good. It's just the, the kids that choose that they want to go virtual the whole year, then that's, the, the state's really tightening down on what they're going to accept, uh, as that.
So Mike, if the, if, if. If she's teaching geography, does she have to give her, I'm picking on Kim. If Kim's teaching geography, does she have to give the Florida International her curriculum, virtual or?
No, no, Florida Virtual will provide the curriculum to the student. Kim, for instance, on her planned time, we'd have to pay her a stipend to pick up these kids, and then like on her planned time or after school, then she would make contact with the students that she's managing to help them with any issues they had in the modules that day.
And, and somebody within Florida Internet, I'm calling Florida International, watches them for the six and a half hours?
No, 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 no. The time's logged.
They're providing.
They're providing the content or curriculums.
Okay. Does it may or may not line up with what they're teaching at the school?
Right.
Sorry. I didn't put you on the spot.
By the end of the year, yes, but not directly as the year goes, and that's why we're saying, if you're choosing the virtual piece, you're almost, you know, choosing, we're assuming you're going to be in there the whole year, because you'll get the whole, because it can be paced differently. Now, if somebody chooses that and they've made the, feel like they've made the wrong decision after they've done it, I'm not going to make them stay in it, that wouldn't, you know, we'll, we'll take them back into the regular classroom, but that's going to, on the front end, that will cost the staffing, and then we're paying for the, the program as well.
How many upfronts do you think it is?
I don't know, that's why I'm saying, I can't give you a cost yet. What we're going to do after you, if you approve the reopening plan tonight, then tomorrow, we're launching the pre-registration for the virtual with, with the details that we know right now of what's, what's going to, I mean, that's going to have to be a big partnership with the parent. That's going to be, you know, the parent's going to have a commitment in that to make sure that they're meeting those, those time requirements and, and things of that nature, so, um, but I don't know, Phil, till, till we get those numbers back and see, and that's why I can't give you a cost right now, because I don't know how many kids are going to choose to go that way. After we have the pre-registration, then I'm going to have the principals call everybody that's pre-registered just to make sure they know, you know, the details of what, what they're undertaking, uh, and, and so they can have, make the most informed decision for, for them. And like I said, I can see it being of, of great benefit to like, uh, kids that are medically fragile and things like that, uh, other than that, you know, but it, it gives parents choices, and that's what we're trying to do. Within the limits that the state is giving us, we're giving parents choices, and that's why I said, some may not like that structure, and some may not want to come to school, so they may decide to homeschool. I'm not stupid, I mean, I realize that, obviously, we want to keep them, but we're, we're trying to be as flexible as we can within the guidelines we're being given, if that makes sense.
And the state can change it tomorrow?
Yes, yeah.
And kids that go with the virtual route, how do they get tutoring if they need it?
That would be, it'd be virtual, virtual tutoring, I mean.
Would it be at that time while they're done the learning if they're needing it?
No, but, see, because like if Kim's teaching and, and she's the one that's managing that student load, then it would be the times that she was free, like would be her planned time or after-school type thing, and we'd have to do a stipend to be able to get teachers to want to, to do that. Or if it's somebody that we pay to hire, then they would have more time, and I don't know, because, you know, if we had, say, 30 third graders that needed it, then it would probably be beneficial to do it that way, to have a teacher oversee all of them, whereas if we only had like three kids at the high school that needed US History, then it would be better to pay a US History teacher a stipend to help those three kids. Does that make sense?
Will all these kids be tested the same?
Yes, the state's not letting up on that, have a testing webinar today.
Are they gonna, are they going to omit the test for this year considering the audience?
They've not, they're full steam ahead, but things change. As of today, that may be my new statement, as of today, because I mean, it does, it changes daily. We have went through this plan numerous times, and, I mean, you know, some things I can control. I can control putting an air purifier in the classroom if you let me, as soon as I get it. I can control the cleaning, I can control the hand, I can control those things, but some things, you know, we have to work within the parameters we're given. And the Florida Virtual is the best program that we've found, quite honestly, that we can afford, uh, to make this option available to the, to the amount of kids that are going to want it. We good there? Can we keep going? I know, that's a, I just don't, I want to be as transparent as I can. It's not just going to be, this is not like spring, when we closed in spring. You know, the state has, went back and looked and said, no, no, and the state board voted, no, if you approve, if the state approves a plan, they've got to, it's like they were sitting in the school building and get that much instruction in a day. So, now, we have figured out we can put lunch in a day, so that was exciting, to, to make sure they get to eat if they're.
Virtual.
Yeah, so, um, health and hygiene, these are some things that, the rest of this plan, pretty much, is what we're going to be doing inside the buildings, uh, to make sure that, that we have a, the best, uh, best return we can have. We'll have additional hand sanitation, uh, hand sanitation stations available throughout the school and at entry points, increased cleaning of high-contact areas. Like I said, we're working with the contractor to get us, uh, more frequent bathroom cleanings, and, and Clay, do you want to address that, Mr. Tinker?
Sure, we met this week to work on a schedule and a rotation for cleanings, where they are wiping down all high-touch areas at a much more frequent rate than before, maybe every hour, so once or twice a day. And so, we met, we talked about personnel and what it would take to do that, and so they are putting a schedule and a couple of options together for us, and then we will look at those and, and decide, um, you know, what's best. If it's, if it doesn't require any additional funding or anything like that, if it does, then we'll, Mr. Garrett will speak with you about that, but it, it's underway.
And I'm, we're, we're exploring to see, uh, if we had to pay additional on that contract, if it could come out of the Essor money, or if I could get reimbursement, 75% back on that, you know, lower the cost. Uh, but, you know, we're asking for a lot more out of them, and they're going to be able to meet some. But, uh, again, I don't see this as, you know, we don't have a great budget, but the thing that I don't see, this stuff is recurring cost. Hopefully next year, you know, we're not having to do this piece, but like the equipment that we're buying, we'll have, so we, if it is, we can use that. And I think we will be just fine with what the contractor's doing, or what we're going to have the contractor doing, but I want to be as safe as I can be, so that's why I want to get the stuff for our staff too, to be able to use as they feel necessary.
Spray things are supposed to be good for flu and everything.
Yes, so I think between those and the, the air purifiers, I'm hoping when flu, regular flu season hit, you know, if we, we, we could use those every year during regular flu season, for sure. And I think that would benefit us then, and we'll have it. And we'll have it while we can get some reimbursement from the federal government on purchasing it as well. So that was, that was my thought exactly, I agree with you. And I, I want to say too, in that survey that we did, the top five things, uh, that the community said they wanted was regular disinfection of the common areas, we've got that in here. Uh, additional hand sanitizer and hand washing, we've got that in here, and we're going to have those materials. Daily temperature checks of staff and students at school, that's the next thing you see in here. Uh, so we've got that in there. Uh, no shared school supplies, which we're, we're talking to principals about, how can we minimize, you know, in elementary, do individual buckets for kids and art, how can, what's the projects we can do where we don't have to share as much, and things, as much as we can, and we still got to have school, uh, and we can still clean things, but to minimize it as much as we can. And then limiting, uh, non-essential visitors to school was, was the fifth one, so, and that's in here on down the plan. So, uh, you know, I feel like, based on the community survey, we're addressing the concerns that, that they had or what would make them feel more comfortable.
And junior and middle school level, are we going to have somebody monitoring the kids to make sure that they're using the hand sanitizing stations?
It, we'll have them set up as you come in the entrance. The principals are locating different things, but mainly it'll be, you know, going in and out of the classrooms, and we'll make sure all the classrooms have those. Uh, we've asked them to keep, of course, while we're ordering the dispensers, all the classrooms already have the hand sanitizer, you know, where you, like what's right there? And we've got hand sanitizer that we can refill those with when it runs out, and that's what we're going to do, and then we'll have some dispensers when they come in and other common area places to where we can get those, or stands with the big dispensers on it. So we're going to refill what's already there with the hand sanitizer we have to keep, keep moving forward.
How will you do daily checks for temperatures? I mean, when I think of a school, and I think of just my school in general, or any school, when those kids start rolling, I mean, they're moving a lot.
Yeah, and we, we've got, uh, uh, each school have a specific plan, but, but the general consensus right now is, of course, the non-contact, you know, you just click and it's there. So car riders, as we're opening the door, we'll just click, and if they got a temperature, they'll keep rolling, if they don't, they'll come on out and go in. And then we're going to have specific locations at the school for the buses to unload, and then we'll just click them as they come in off the buses. So each school will probably have two or three spots, depending on who they are coming in, to get them before they get through the front doors, and then if anybody does have a temperature, then, uh, they'll have a mask, we'll have a mask on them, and they'll be in, in the clinic so their parent can come get them.
So like, the students, I know that it said 100.4, so if those kids have a temperature of 100.4, they're going to keep rolling, but attendance doesn't count for them, so that's not going to.
No, if they've got a temperature, they're all keep rolling. We'll, we'll pull them into the clinic with a mask, and then when the parent, they'll be, we won't, that won't be a parent.
That's not going to get them into.
That won't, no, that won't be a parent, no. No, and I'll talk about that in a few minutes. We don't want kids coming to school sick, and we're going to be flexible, and I'll talk about that. But, you know, that, that would be an administratively excused absence.
So what do you do if a teacher walks in with 100.4?
If they walk in with 100.4, uh, depends on, on whether they're showing, uh, other symptoms or not, just to be honest with you.
We're not going to allow that, we're not going to allow any teachers to sit.
Well, well, and, and that's, that's also in this packet, uh, critical infrastructure. So that's, part of that is, uh, if, if they're, if they're, if they're exhibiting symptoms, then they go home. But if they're, you know, otherwise, they'd be wearing a mask, and then, or we'll be closing school for no staff if, if we don't keep them working.
But if they have to go home, how will that play into their, I know, because they only have 10 days, so how does that hit them if they come in?
If we don't send them home. If we don't send them home, I mean, that's why I'm saying, if it's, if we suspect they've got symptoms of COVID, then that don't count on their sick days. But if they're just sick, like they was normally sick, then yeah, it would. Does that make sense?
Did you pre-reg?
I did. Oh, well.
Does that, does that make-
It does.
If we, if we send them home because we think they may have COVID-like symptoms, they won't be charged with sick days. But if they, if they've got the stomach bug, like they would've got the stomach bug last year, they would've had to take a sick bug.
Right, right, right.
Yeah. But no, if we think they've, if we think they've got symptoms, if they've got symptoms, COVID-like symptoms, we don't want them in the building, and they will, they will go home.
Well, should, like school bus riders, you said that they'll be checked whenever they get to the school.
Yes.
Should they not be checked before they get on the bus? Because that's a smaller area, and if you got a packed bus, you've still got a chance of spreading it to everybody.
Well, we had, we had talked about that, and here's, here's where we landed with that. Okay, so if you're a first grader, and you're at the, you're getting on the bus, and your parents have already left, and you've got a temperature, number one, we're gonna have somebody take the temperature, and it can't be the bus driver because they're trying to pick out the bus. So, if you find forty people that are willing to get on the bus at six AM and ride it for two hours, it's gonna cost you a quarter of a million dollars, if you can find them, to take the temperature. And then when you take the temperature, if they've got the temperature and the parents already left, you got three options. One is you send a first grader back to their house that they can't get into, that's empty. I don't want to do that. Two, you can hold the bus with all the kids on it until the parent gets there, which could take hour, two hours. I don't want to do that. Or three, we put a kid on the bus knowing that they have a temperature, which is what you were trying to avoid before you spent the quarter million dollars. So, that's kind of where we come at. Ideally, yes, that would be great, but practically, I don't think that's feasible. The one thing we are gonna do is every bus will have a box of masks. If any of the kids want to wear them, then they can put them right, you know, like if you're, if I get on and I'm sitting beside Kenny and I want to wear a mask, I put a mask on.
But here's my question to that, then, if we're not gonna do that part, say a kid does end up having a fever and they're on that bus with all those kids, do all those kids have to go home now?
No, because just because they have, and that's the thing we gotta keep in account, just because you've got a fever doesn't mean you've got COVID. You can have a fever for a number of things. When they get, when they get to school, then the nurse will check them out and then see if they have any other symptoms there. The other piece to that is, if they rode the bus and we've checked them for a temperature, the parent will be getting a call and say, because this is a partnership with parents. So, we'll be saying, you know, we've asked you to check the temperature of the kids before you send them to the bus. So, you know, if you can't help us, they're not gonna be able to ride the bus anymore. So, you know, and if that kid gets on the bus again, you know, if it's a repetitive thing and they keep having a fever and they're not checking it, then we'll take the, like any other discipline, bus discipline.
Is it mandatory for the child to have to go be tested for the COVID if they have a fever?
No.
Because we listened to all the things you said now, the weak link is, I sit here and listen, is the bus.
Yes.
I mean, we can control a lot of things in the school, but it's gonna be almost impossible to control that on the buses.
And to answer, ask me your question one more time.
If a child is sent home because of a fever, is it mandatory for them to have to go be tested?
When the nurse checks out the child, if the nurse has a fever and is also showing symptoms typical, then we'll ask the parent to take them to a pediatrician. It could be a strep, it could be something else. And then if they bring us back a note saying it's something else, they can come back in. If they say, I don't want to take my kid to the doctor, then we have to assume that it could be that, and they would be out for the ten days plus the seventy-two hours symptom-free.
And that'd be my next question, because if you're now assuming, because they didn't go, all these other kids that were with them, that was on the bus.
That's what Gary's point is. Is it too much to ask the driver to take the temperature?
Yes, yes.
Okay, why?
Can we have sanitizing stations on the buses too?
Yeah, we've got, we're gonna have hand sanitizer on the bus, and we're gonna have masks available. You've got a bus driver, remember, that's driving forty or fifty kids, and they're watching the road, they're watching the kids, and-
Before they get on, I mean, as they walk on.
The other piece we've got to keep into account is, over half of our bus drivers are over the age of sixty. So, you're wanting to put a person that's most at risk checking temperatures with the kids that are least at risk.
They're gonna get exposed to them anyway, Mike, is the question.
Yeah. No, I'm just saying, that's the thing we've talked through, that's, like I said, there's no perfect plan. But you're right, the buses are an issue, but the buses are also something that the school board does not have to provide. Now, we want to, but it's an optional service. So, I mean, we're gonna encourage them to bring them in cars if they want to, but I know some people can't do that, and they've got to use the buses. And we're trying to make them as safe as we can, but when you see down here, as much as we can in the mornings seating them, now in the afternoons, it'll be a little bit different because if we load, you know, depending on where we load high school, middle school-
Volunteer to take-
Kid will roll out of the car, the parent did checks temperature, and then- This is where the parent's gonna have to help us.
Well, can we, can we get a volunteer to consider, just talking out loud, this is workshop, can we get maybe a volunteer to take the temperatures for the driver as they come on?
Some other systems have thought about doing this, and I don't, I mean, you're talking-
Not a reasonable thing.
You're talking forty people to leave a bus yard at six AM for two hundred days a year.
You go back, and also what you said earlier about leaving the kid on, you know, I can just test out-
You're still back to that point.
Is that we've got, it was on Holland Avenue in Merrimack, you got sixty-plus kids and get them three buses, and, you know, all their parents are at work. And so, big brothers are looking at them, so.
And that, if they're running-
It's not much of a win here.
Right. I'm saying, this is not, there's no perfect answer, but this is the best that we can come up with.
Trying to double that.
Yes.
Are we going to encourage people not to use the buses and to bring their children to school?
They can, if they don't want to use the buses and can bring their kids, that's, I think that's advisable, but I mean, we can't tell them not to use the buses if we're providing them. But we, they can know what our plan is. We'll have hand sanitizers, if they want masks, they'll have that. The other thing we're doing on the buses is, we're lowering, all year long, we'll have two windows in the back, two in the middle, and two in the front that are lowered to create circulation that's shown to help, where it don't get all stuff in. Now, it's pretty weather, we can lower them all, but we'll have those three lowered to get the circulation. We'll have the assigned seats as much as we can, so if we do have somebody ends up positive, then we can identify who was sitting around them, to go back to what you were saying earlier. And remember, we're mitigating risks. We cannot eliminate risks. There's no practical way to do that unless we can buy another hundred and twenty buses and find a hundred and twenty bus drivers to follow the six feet apart.
Moving along, we're getting, we're getting close on time.
Moving on down, training for staff and students on the healthy routines. Like I said, they're encouraged to stay home if they're running the temperature. We've got face coverings are recommended when they can be worn appropriately without touching and with good hand hygiene of students and staffs, but not required. That was, seemed to be consistent with the survey, about six to eight percent of the twenty-two hundred people felt like requiring it. So, that's, and then I know there's people on both sides of that, and that's, that's one of those things, you're not gonna make everybody happy on either. Facilities and routines, again, turning the water fountains off, putting the water filling stations in, increasing the cleaning and sanitation of the high-contact areas, increasing the air circulation in the classroom, opening windows or doors where we can, you know, getting the air purifiers. We're practical, because we're, like I said, we're looking at ordering those. Hopefully, we can get that many and get them in in a timely fashion. Field, large group assemblies you won't see for a while. And remember, this is right now starting off. We're hoping that as time goes on, we can get closer back to normal than we have to start off. This is not the whole year, this will be as, as we need it. Field, it may be the whole year, I hope it's not. Field trips, virtual field trips, no in-person field trips right now, unless it's deemed essential, like a CTE-type thing or something like that where they're still doing that. Social distancing as much as possible in the classroom. What we'll ask teachers to do is, however many kids they've got in the classroom, move the desks as far apart as they can. Probably won't be six feet in all the classrooms, especially at the high school where we've got more kids, but we'll get them as far apart as we can. Minimizing transitions as much as possible, altering some schedules on arrival and dismissal so we don't have congregation of students. We've talked a lot about how we can get the kids off the buses and in the school without having that backlog and adjusting, adjusting bus schedules. Doing as much physical activity outside as possible. We've just talked, I just talked about the buses and that conversations. Again, and we'll have face masks available on every bus, in every classroom, and at every school, if anybody wants to wear them, we'll have them. All the teachers, we're gonna provide face shields that you can breathe and see through. I mean, you know, they'll be off, if they want to wear them, they'll have those, plus they also have masks available. The cafeteria, thorough hand washing and hand sanitizing before we come in. The cafeteria staff will be wearing face coverings. If monitors are helping kid, real close to kids, then they'd be wearing a mask, you know, if they were opening the milk carton of the kindergarten or whatever, and getting real close proximity. We've adjusted lunch periods so that we can have a one-seat separation in the cafeteria and spread out some places where we're gonna eat. Instead of having breakfast in the mornings in the cafeteria where we have large groups, they're gonna be grab-and-go breakfast, and then that way, principals will have students in different parts of the building as the day, as the day starts, so that they're not all congregated together, and we can have some spacing there. Clinics will be typically, you know, we've got the clinics, we've got a nurse everywhere. Campus visitors, we're gonna ask that we don't have any visitors other than visitors that make an appointment. If they need to talk to a teacher, then we'll ask them to make an appointment. We don't want any visitors past the health and temperature screening area, and this is typical of all the systems that I've talked to other, other directors. It's also part of the Department of Health recommendations, and it was number five on the survey. So, parent breakfast and parent lunch, we won't be, parents won't be eating breakfast or lunch with their kids for a little while. And then, use of school facilities is gonna be limited. Volunteers are gonna be limited for a while, we won't have those. I'm gonna suspend all perfect attendance incentives because we want kids to stay at home if they're sick. Going back to what you were saying, Kim, if I've got a sick child, then just call the, you know, they're running temperature, call the nurse and say, hey, he's sick today, I'm not seeing him in, we'll administratively excuse that. I don't want kids coming to school sick, so, you know, we'll deal with those on case-by-case basis. I've told the principals, you have the authority to administratively excuse those absences to keep your sick kids from coming to school. Athletics, we're gonna follow the, whatever the state and T double S double A puts out. We'll still have lunch before and after school, following the safety guidelines. And then, the COVID, if we do have a positive test in a school, then we'll notify people that, say, we've got a positive test, we've got a positive case, say, at Eaton Elementary, can't say who, obviously, for hipper reasons, but we'll say, we've got one, we're working with the health department. The health department will do the contact tracing. I'm not gonna close, the state has urged us not to just close down for this. So, for instance, we may close a classroom if we've got a couple of cases in a classroom. But if we've got one student at a school that has it, then the health department will contact trace, and then the kids that need to be quarantined for two weeks, we'll start that remote learning so that they're still learning and not getting behind through the virtual, through the Zoom and the Teams while they're out. And then when they come back, hopefully, they won't be behind, and we'll keep moving, keep moving on, and we don't have to shut down the whole system or shut down the whole school. That's the goal, is not to shut down, to keep moving, and that's what we've been urged to do.
Mike, do we have policy in here on face masks?
It was in here, that's, it's encouraged but not required. And the board can change that if they want to. This is the draft policy we're giving, we're giving to you. You can make any changes you want to. This was based, like I said, on all of the information that I gave you as we sifted through it, and there's no perfect plan. But this is the best that we felt like was gonna keep our kids the safest, be able to get them back in school and us feel good about them being, being safe and as healthy as possible with what we've got, so. Any questions on that?
Mr. Chairman, maybe just a suggestion that, although we're out of the workshop, we're starting our regular board meeting, if maybe we, I'm sure people want to make comments before we vote on this. If maybe we go on and do our regular, regular meeting, and we just vote to amend the agenda, put the recognition of visitors up front at the top.
Okay. We can, we can do the vote very first thing, right over the bridge, right? To amend the agenda.
Sure. Yeah.
But what everybody likes.
Way to get a block turn to talk.
Okay. Does anybody have anything else? Okay. Let's take five minutes then before we start our regular meeting. July night, 2020, board meeting?
Pass out.
I'm sorry. Since we've already had the pledge and the prayer, we're gonna go straight into the meeting because of time. At this time, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion that we move the recognition of visitors to the very top, past our, so one of the, this is making it to the very top, and then go from there.
I'll say. Is that anything on or not on the agenda?
Yes. Anything, yes.
Okay. Would you roll call that, please?
Mr. Newman?
No. Mr. Muffett?
Yes.
Mr. Muffett?
Yes.
Mr. Bridges?
Yes.
Mr. Rodding?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Solomon?
Yes.
Okay. Recognition of visitors. At this time, anybody that wants to speak about anything that is on or not on the agenda and will work left or right. All right? Ma'am, podium, station eight, please.
My name is Amy Wilder, and I just had a question for the students that were immune compromised and their family members, like what would be their educational options?
Okay, you're good.
Sorry.
Just my, yeah.
I'll squeeze this out of the way, you don't have to, some social distance.
Yes, my question was educational options for children with immune issues and their family members.
That would be, that would be the virtual school option. And, you know, we'd ask that you talk with the principal too, to make sure that they have all the information, to make sure they can give you the best course of action, but that, my initial answer would be the virtual school option if you didn't feel, if they didn't feel comfortable in the, in the building.
Okay. Thank you.
Who else was on the left side? Cindy.
My name's Cindy Crawford. I've got just a quick question on the virtual school. Children that have already trotted out for athletic teams, that are, have been accepted to those teams, how does that play into that factor? Because I did read over that, so if they start the school, they still have the option to go back into the public school setting from the virtual academies. How does that affect the athletics?
And let me say too, we, we don't recommend that because the curriculum's gonna be a little bit different, and that's gonna be tougher on the child. And we don't have all the specifics on the virtual piece yet, other than what I was saying, what the state guidelines are, you know, the six and a half hours and all that. But as far as that's concerned, the virtual students still are students, so they could still play athletics, in my opinion.
Okay. Thank you.
Jimmy.
My name is Tammy Bright. My concern is, you know, and I'm all for what you've said on the sanitizers, the sprays, everything like that, but who's gonna be responsible for filling the sanitizer stands?
Though, we've asked the principal to designate a person at each, each school, that way we can monitor our volume too, because when we start running low, we need to know so we can get some more. So, we've asked them to make sure that there's one person designated in their building. So, like, if a teacher started running low, they would break theirs to whoever's been designated to refill that.
Okay. And I've brought it to Mr. Tinker's attention several times about the cleanliness of the bathrooms at the schools. Eaton's is horrible, even after the talk he had with them.
And that company was bought out by another company since. That was right about the same time we went into closure. So, we're actually dealing with a new company now. So, they seem to be very proactive, and they were very supportive about trying to move some night shift folks to the day shift to get what we were asking them to do without that additional expense, other than just saying, no, that's going to cost you more money. So, I'm hoping, but that's another reason, because that, that perception that you're saying is out there as well, and that's another reason I wanted to lay another layer on top of it with what we're doing, on top of what they're doing.
Okay. But keeping parents and everybody out away from it, how do we know it's being done?
Our recommendation's not to let anybody in because we feel like that exposes the kids.
That's what I'm saying. How do we know it's going to be done?
You'll have to trust your teachers and your administrator and your staff.
We've trusted them for years, and it's not been done.
All I can say is you'll have to trust them. I mean, you can make an appointment and come in. It's just we can't have 250 people in the cafeteria every morning at Eaton exposing all the kids to whatever they bring. When we're taking all these measures to keep kids separated throughout the day, we, all of that is wasted if we, if we let everybody come in and do that.
And I agree to a point, but, okay, so you're saying, as a parent...
And this is as of now. I'm saying, as a parent, you'd...
You can make an appointment.
And we're going to make sure that, beginning of school, we want every parent to be able to go in and see how the classroom's set up, see how everything's set up in the school, and talk to the principal and the staff. And we'll do that before school starts, so they can see where they're sending their child to and what they're doing. We want them to feel comfortable with that. But once school gets rolling, then we'll ask them to make an appointment to come in and go past the office and talk to the teacher.
But, I mean, that'll be approved if I say, you know, I'd like to check the restrooms. They're going to let me go look, you know, check the restrooms?
If you want to talk to the teacher about the, you just won't have to trust us on the cleaning piece. I mean, we're not going to let everybody come in to check the bathrooms when they want to.
Our bathrooms are so pathetic that the kids won't even use them. It's, how bad is it?
It is bad.
I've got Denise Littleton right here. She had children out there. I mean, we have complained and complained, and it's not done no good. You know, we have got an issue at Eaton's and North Middle. North Middle's are better than Eaton's, but they still have an issue. You know, when a kid will come home and you get them in the car and hurry up, we've got to get home to, you know, use the bathroom. That's a problem. You know, because that child's sitting there all day holding, you know.
Mr. Grier, can you look into that, please?
I just said, we've got a new, I mean, school's not been in operation since March, so, I mean, we've got a new company, and we'll keep...
Can we monitor?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. Another thing, pre-K kids. You have to walk the pre-K kid into the school, sign them in, and wait till the teacher comes to get them. Are they still going to do that?
We'll have protocols on pre-K. Do you want to address that, Ms. Warren?
With pre-K, what we're going to do at the beginning, at the beginning, we'll go ahead and they have to sign in just like they do, but we're going to offer some time that you guys can come and see what the, what the classroom's like. You know, we're going to offer that.
Same thing for kindergarten. If we've got a kindergarten parent bringing a new kindergartner in during those staggered days, they're not going to come when everybody else starts school at eight o'clock in the madness. We'll make, they'll come at like eight thirty. They'll be able to walk the kid back to the kindergarten room, check it out, do what they would normally. We understand kindergartners and precarers, but they're not going to do that all year. They'll do that for a couple of weeks to make sure everybody's comfortable.
We're going to monitor it. We're going to monitor it with them.
But the parent will have their temperature taken and all that before they go back. But it'll be after the influx of kids comes in that morning. But we're, we're very conscious of needs of kindergarten and pre-K parents.
All right. All right. Thank you.
Is everybody on the left side?
Yep.
Come on in.
Good job, Kim.
Okay, first off, I'd like to say, there's no amount of money you can do your job right now, Mr. Grier. You can't.
I'm about ready to get back.
I don't blame you. There we go.
Stand tonight, please.
Lynn Greer, hi. I've been doing this forever. If you don't know me, you've been missing out. I would like to ask a couple of points and clarification. I'm not complaining about anything that you're doing at this point. I feel you all have done your best in a nasty situation, and I'm aware that day after tomorrow, it could all change, and this could be paper airplanes for all it's worth. Florida Virtual, is that a requirement by the state?
No, ma'am. That's the, that's one of the programs that we, and Jennifer, would you care to teach to that? The six and a half hours is a requirement of the state. That's one of the programs that came most highly recommended. Like I said, that's what Len Nor City's been using. It would meet all the qualifications, and we feel like we could get that approved, and it would be, we would be able to train our teachers on that as well.
So, that's...
Metro Nashville's using as well. Several cities.
Okay. Don't, don't tell me we're doing it because Metro Nashville's doing it.
No, we're doing it because it's...
Okay. The question, I guess I need to clarify even more, is they can do Zoom if we get the school shut down again, but you can't do Zoom for virtual learning because you can't track that six and a half hours? Is that...
No, it, I can't ask a teacher to teach the kids that they've got in their classroom and teach Zoom kids all year long. If we were doing just the Zoom where they're doing all that, then that would be easier to manage.
See, my thought process, and this is just my thought process, is it's the same amount of kids. And she's got them right there on her computer, sitting on her desk. She's got the rest of them sitting in her class. And that would make virtual learning a whole lot more happier for me than having some teacher that I don't know. I don't know their qualifications. I don't know if they're a kindergartner teacher teaching seventh-grade algebra, which still better than me, teaching seventh-grade algebra. What about the students that have a legitimate reason to virtual school but do not have access to the internet?
And those are cases that we're going to have to look at case by case, because I, right now, like I said, we hit that snag today, so I don't have an answer for that.
You don't have an answer yet?
No. I mean, I'm just being honest.
But you will in two weeks when we come back, you reckon?
I don't know.
Well, you're right. You'll have an answer in thirteen days, and on the fourteenth, they'll change it.
Yeah.
Okay. Wait a minute, I know there was something else. Okay, the six and a half-hour learning day.
And another reason, another reason I haven't answered that is I don't know volume. You know what I'm saying? I don't know if I'm talking about ten kids that don't have internet access, or if I'm talking about a thousand, you know what I'm saying? That's how I can, until I have an idea of what we're dealing with.
Well, then you've got people like me. I can get internet if I want to pay seventy dollars a month. I don't want to pay seventy dollars a month. And you can't make me because you're a public school. So, you know.
I'm not asking, I'm not...
Right. I'm just saying, I'm not, really, I appreciate what you're doing, and I'm not downing you in any way, shape, form, fashion. I'm just asking questions so that when the thousand people that have been calling me today call me tomorrow, I'll be able to give them...
And that's why I made that statement earlier. I don't want to lose any kids.
Right.
But if we've got parents that don't want to bring their kids back to the district building and, and the virtual piece doesn't work out, then, you know, they've had the third option of the homeschool, which I hope they don't do. But, I mean, those are multiple options that, that are out there and available.
The six and a half-hour learning day?
Yes, ma'am.
Does it have to be six and a half continual hours, or can it be broken up as long as it's six and a half hours within?
I have to defer to my team. I'm not sure. I think just as long as it's...
Six and a half hours.
Yeah, we've, we've got to...
It can be broken up.
There'll be times when they're eating or...
Or their mom's not going to sit there for six and a half hours a day. I mean, you know, mom and dad's not...
And, and the six and a half hours is not continuous time on the computer. Part of that's independent practice. Not all of that six and a half can be monitored on the computer. The computer piece would be the time shown that they spent on the module, learning what they were supposed to be learning, then they do the independent practice. Turning in the work takes care of the independent practice piece, so we know they've done that. And then the check-in would know, you know, the teacher, when they check in, would know, too. So, it's a combination of the three things to be able to know that they're, what we don't want happening is kids not making academic progress because they've chosen an option that's not, you know, and that's what we've got to keep from happening, is make sure. We want everybody to learn whether they're virtually or in the school, and we got to make sure that we're helping people set up for success in that area.
All right. Are you sure that covered it? One more time, thank you. You want me to come up with something else, Mr. Sh...
Oh, no.
Yes, you did. Thank you so much for all the work that you all have done, for all the kids. Can't make everybody happy. I support you. I support you.
Thank you.
Y'all have a good one.
Anybody else on the left inside?
Left, left.
You seemed anxious.
I was, but now I'm getting nervous.
My name's Kevin Crowley. I guess I maybe not need the mic. I just wanted to point out a few things before you guys vote on masks. I like what you have about the air scrubbers. I mean, if you buy a decent air scrubber in your classrooms, eighteen feet by twenty-six feet, and you're moving five hundred cubic feet per minute, you'll clean every bit of that air, you know, four and a half times every hour. And I'd like to see that almost the extent of what we do. I don't, I'm not fond of the masks. I think they provide a false insecurity. The virus is one point two, point one-two-five microns in size, and your best filter, N100, is only effective to point three microns and larger. So, if the virus was airborne, your mask would be a hundred percent useless, but they're not. It's carried on water vapor that is ten microns in size, and as that water vapor gets on your mask, only your surgical mask have any kind of rating of resistance against getting moist. And they are only designed to be used for one surgery and thrown away. And even with that one surgery and thrown away, they're only sixty-six percent effective. So, the longer you wear a mask, the more face touching you're doing, the more you're putting yourself at risk. And also that, anytime you talk, any chance that that particle had to get caught in a dust cake, because I work with filtration for a living, and I work at a plant that makes us wear masks, and I go to ocean training once a year. So, even if that particle were to get caught on a dust cake, when you talk, when you move, when you bend your mask, you break that dust cake up, and you move the smallest particles in to be sucked in. You know, if you, if you feel safe with the mask, and if they are used properly, yes, they do provide a little bit of a buffer, but I don't want that little bit of a buffer that they could provide to be overruled by false insecurity and provide room for kids to tease other kids for being required to wear masks and all that other stuff that can go with it. I mean, I like the idea of having them just completely voluntary and no more than that. And that's all I got.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Hello. My name is Katie Bellner Thomas. I really wish that I were introducing myself to you by shaking your hand. Not today, but that's my style, and I'd like you to know that that's my sentiment. I'm very proud to be an eighth-grade teacher at North Middle School and lifelong Loudoun County resident. I would like to first thank the board members for their service to the community and to say that it's an honor to meet with and speak to so many public servants, from police officers to teachers to park and rec, to facilities management, team coaches, and more. I'm honored to be among so many people who dedicate their lives to Loudoun County. I'd also like to thank and commend my superiors for their work on sanitation, feeding the children of this county, and technology, their tireless work. I'm here to raise a matter that I view of the utmost importance to the plan for reopening schools. I'm here to beg the lady and gentlemen of the board to use their authority, authority I don't have as a teacher, to include mandatory masks as a cornerstone of our reopening plan. Maybe not all ages, maybe not all environments, but I believe it should be the norm, and as the norm, it would decrease teasing. I'm fully aware that this is not popular, but what is popular very infrequently is what is right. Please allow me to try to persuade you as a teacher, a mother, and a member of this community. I should also begin on the premise that I'm very much in support of reopening schools. I've wanted nothing more than to be back in my classroom with my students and to send my own son off to preschool since March. I've cried for the loss of time with my students, the knowledge that so many of them would be at home hungry, without guidance, without the means to complete any online work, because they were too busy taking care of younger children for their essential worker parents and grandparents. I am aware of the incredible social and economic service that schools provide by taking care of our community's children, day in and day out, and how necessary it is. I do that work. Indeed, my request is the only chance we have for schools opening safely and remaining open for more than a few weeks. That's what I want, to remain open. Earlier this week, I was made aware of the many thoughtful logistics that my school plans to implement in order to control the increasingly rapid spread of COVID-19. We will do so many new things, like walk students to their class, keep class groups the same throughout the day, keep strict seating charts, check temperatures at the door, be prepared to teach online at the drop of a hat, all of which I am perfectly willing to do. However, when we got down to discussing the details of this new kind of school day, it became clear that I would still be teaching around ninety different students a day. My class sizes would still be thirty to thirty-five students at a time. There have been no upgrades as of yet, very excited, to the building's very poor ventilation system, and several classrooms, including mine, still have no windows to open. One change is that the substitute list of noble men and women ready to take my place in the event that I get sick has dwindled into nonexistence. Given those realities of my day, I was shocked to hear that masks would not be required in the building. Indeed, the CDC, our highest federal-level health agency, advises this. People wear cloth face coverings in public settings and when around people who don't live in our household, especially when other social distancing measures are difficult to maintain. I'll just describe my classroom. Imagine the impossibility of social distancing in my classroom that has gotten no bigger, teaching ninety students a day because the teaching staff hasn't grown either. I can understand and accept the limit to our resources. As a teacher, I'm used to that. All I ask is that, given the fact that we cannot properly social distance, we follow government guidelines for mask wearing. It is not too late to change this. In fact, yesterday, our Republican governor, Bill Lee, said this in his daily briefing. "We need you to embrace another habit, and that is wearing a mask. A mask isn't just a way to protect you and your family. It's a way to protect Tennessee economy, and we need buy-in. We need you to embrace the simple habit of mask wearing. If this is what our governor implores, then it would be totally justified for this governing body to heed his word in leadership." Education Commissioner Schwinn later said that, "In reopening Tennessee schools, we'll put safety and high-quality education as a priority." I ask you, how is safety a priority when I'm asked to work in conditions where socially distancing is impossible but masks are not required? How is high-quality education a priority when the professional teacher necessary to provide that education will be out sick or worse, and there's no one standing to replace me? More good news is that this is not at all unprecedented. Yesterday, Maryville unveiled its plan that expects eighth through twelfth graders to wear masks, and masks will be given to all of these students, Maryville City Schools. Also, Texas released its state education plan for reopening schools, and they will require students over ten years old who have no adverse medical conditions to wear masks. Many European countries have reopened schools with few problems, as our president alluded to as success stories just yesterday on Twitter. The vast majority of them require masks. In fact, Sweden's schools can be looked at as a cautionary tale. They have had no mask requirements and have mourned the death of two teachers. I know this board will not stand for that. I know schools must open for the students. I am asking you all to think and vote in the interest of them because protecting their teachers and parents and grandparents is in their best interest. The arguments for reopening are quick to sight that children are less impacted by this deadly disease and are frequently asymptomatic when infected, meaning they do not suffer symptoms. And for this, I say, thank God. But therein lies the argument for masks, since temp checks will not catch the thirty-five percent of cases of children who walk through our doors that are asymptomatic. We won't know who's sick in the building until it's too late. Too late for my aging coworkers, my pregnant coworkers, my diabetic coworkers, my coworkers who are parents to newborns, my coworkers who take care of elderly parents, and too late for the grandparents who parent almost forty percent of our student population, forty percent of mammals and pet balls. Without masks, the very real people I just mentioned will be exposed to this virus before we ever know there's a problem because that's how the vicious airborne nature works. We are reopening without mask testing. I have just proved the problematic nature of temp checks and screenings, as did Mr. Jenkins earlier. It is widely known that for masks to be effective, both parties have to wear one, meaning that if I am to be safe from germs of ninety kids, they must wear a mask because only wearing a mask myself protects me from them about one-third of the time. Are you comfortable risking my life sixty-six percent of the time? I have also considered the point that children wearing masks will be flawed. To this, I would like to cite a recent analysis of coronavirus outbreaks in forty-two countries, which posited, "Is it not better to adopt a possibly imperfect protective measure rather than waiting for more evidence at the expense of human lives?" Findings from Arizona State University further support this by stating, "Broad adoption of even relatively ineffective face masks may meaningfully reduce community transmission of COVID-19, potentially reducing mortality rate by sixty-five percent." I want to be in that, sixty-five percent. Masks are the only simple solution, however unpleasant or imperfect, that can potentially keep our schools open and save lives. Isn't that potential worth any discomfort or disapproval? To prove that it is indeed, I draw from this sacred text... To prove that it is indeed, I draw from this sacred text, Philippians, Chapter 2, Verse 4, says, "Let each of you look not to his own interests, but also to the interests of others." I'll leave you with a question of paramount importance that I voiced at the request of several teachers, and I beg you to consider. Why are masks not required? If the answer is popular opinion or civil liberties, I say, as a teacher, a mother, a daughter, a resident, and a voter, that is not good enough. We live in a society of the rule of law. Some things must be decided by leaders to protect those who cannot protect themselves. Indeed, fire escapes, seat belts, and legal drinking ages were not always popular, and people would surely break some of these mandates if given the choice. But the public servants who have implemented preventative measures to save lives will be remembered as visionaries. We need your strong research-based leadership now. I believe that if you look into your hearts and look at the realities of the environment and requirements for teachers as we reopen in a pandemic, you will see that no change to these policies reflects an egregious lack of value for our health, safety, and well-being. I thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Anything else to anybody else?
I'm Brian Kilch. We just heard two very different opinions on masks. One, I would say, sounded like an expert that works with filtration. I liked his opinion, since he seems to have a lot of knowledge about how the filtration works. I don't see any need to require everybody to wear something that is not effective, that is not guaranteed to be effective. We talk about how our country is set up, and we have freedom of choice. I should have the freedom of choice if I wear a mask. Teacher should have freedom of choice if she wants to wear a mask. If she wants to wear it, that's fine with me. But my 12-year-old is back here shaking his head, he doesn't want to wear a mask, and I don't feel that he needs it. That's my choice as his parent, to put a mask on him or not, just like it's everybody's choice whether they do virtual learning or they do it at school learning. If we do school learning, there's a chance our kids could get sick. But we're willing to take that chance, because we want our kids back in school. My 12-year-old wants to be back in school. I've heard that so many times from him that I've been shocked, but he's ready to go back to school. He doesn't want to wear a mask, he wants to get back to life, and we can get back to life. I know because I run a childcare center in Loudoun County. I have two locations. My biggest location in Lenoir City has been having about 65 to 75 kids a day. There's been no coronavirus outbreak in the daycare. Nobody is wearing a mask. We are hand washing, sanitizing, disinfecting, more than we ever did. But we are constantly being vigilant about keeping the daycare clean and just regular sickness. Knock on wood, that's what keeps happening, but we're fighting to keep that going. And so, and we were only closed a month during all of this. So we closed during April, when it was at its peak. And if you look at the death rates, those have been dropping, and they're plummeting down from where they were, which is great. But we've got to get back out, and we've got to build up our immunities to this, and we have to get the herd immunity that you keep hearing about, because if you hide behind the mask, you're not going to get immune to it. If you stay at home, you're not going to build up the immunities. So we've got to build our bodies up, and we need our leadership to give us a choice, just like Mayor Bradshaw did. He gave us the choice whether we have to wear a mask or not. I had to go to Knoxville today, and I hated it, I didn't want to go, but I had to wear a mask when I was there. I did, because it's the law, but it was not something that I want to do all day, and it's not something I want my children to do while they're at school all day. And working in childcare, I can tell you, teaching a group of kids all day, especially young children, wearing a mask is almost impossible. You've got pre-K, you've got kindergarten, you've got K through 3, that's going to just, you're going to have a chore keeping it on them all day. You're going to be wasting your time trying to keep those masks on them. Once you get in the middle and high school, it'll be a lot easier, but with the younger children, it's a waste of time. Those masks are going to be on their shoe, they're going to be on their head, they're going to be twisting them around, throwing them up in the air. I mean, it's just, it's not practical for young children to wear a mask all day. And we need to think about that and give the kids and the parents a choice. So, and that's what your plan says, and I think that's a good plan. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ron.
Hi, I'm Nicole Staten. I have children in every school. I had a child in Eaton's, North Middle, and at Loudoun High School this year. Hi, Ms. BT. When you got up here and you were talking and stuff, and yeah, you had a lot of great points, but really, could you see Garrett? Look at this, hey Tanner! I mean, that's really, and he's 14 years old. There's no way he's going to wear a mask all day.
He always followed my rules.
You want to come home with me? But also, if you have been into North Middle School, they have pod classes. They're not set up to where you have one class and then another class. You have to walk through one class to get to another class. I was telling Carrie, I was like, it's like it was at Loudoun Elementary when we were students. You have a very thin wall separating like your science from your math, or your English from your social studies. So yeah, they don't have a lot of room to move their students around and to have the stuff that we are going to need for all of this that's going on. Do I think our children need to wear masks? No. I've got five. They ain't ever going to wear a mask. But I think maybe we should look into somehow reconfiguring their classrooms to make the teachers and stuff feel better about going back to school, because I've noticed a lot of the teachers are not going back this year. There's been several that have, I'm not going back, because they have small children at home and...
Well, they have been redoing a lot of the rooms, taking nonessential stuff out, where there'll be more room for the kids.
Okay. Are they going to set it up like where, well, I mean, like Fort Loudoun? If you toured that school, and then you go to North Middle and tour that school, it's like totally different worlds.
We don't have a building program in place up there.
Yeah, I mean, there is. I mean, they're extremely outdated, and so they don't really have the room to spread out, like, and that's just something to consider. But yeah, I don't believe in wearing masks, but their school, their classroom sizes are smaller than the normal classroom size.
Anyone else? All right, see you, number one. Consent agenda.
I make a motion.
Let's take it. Ms. Kayla, would you roll call that, please?
Mr. Newman?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Moffett?
Yes.
Ms. Bridges?
Yes.
Mr. Rodding?
Yes.
Mr. Ebbin?
Yes.
Mr. Sommen?
Aye.
Enaveer Services Contract.
Motion.
Second. Got it. Well, many, let's roll call that one also.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Moffett?
Yes.
Ms. Bridges?
Yes.
Mr. Rodding?
Yes.
Mr. Ebbin?
Yes.
Mr. Sommen?
Yes.
Mr. Newman?
Yes.
Fast. Budget amendments. From Ms. Karen and Chad about those.
Motion to accept this.
Motion?
Second.
Second. Would you roll call that one, please?
Mr. Moffett?
Yes.
Ms. Bridges?
Yes.
Mr. Rodding?
Yes.
Mr. Ebbin?
Yes.
Mr. Sommen?
Aye.
Mr. Newman?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
All right, I forget what Chad called this, but unpaid bills for North Middle School. The account's payable, not your motion. Any discussion on that? Roll call, please.
Ms. Bridges?
Yes.
Mr. Rodding?
Yes.
Mr. Ebbin?
Yes.
Mr. Sommen?
Aye.
Mr. Newman?
No.
Chad should call it.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Moffett?
Yes.
The request for overnight field trip, I think we're going to table that one right now, correct?
Yes, sir.
Would it need to be a motion?
I don't think so.
No? Okay. Yes, or grant? Here, motion.
Second.
Motion, second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rodding?
Yes.
Mr. Ebbin?
Yes.
Mr. Sommen?
Aye.
Mr. Newman?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Moffett?
Yes.
Ms. Bridges?
Yes.
Loudoun County Schools reopening plan has, it was presented to us tonight, which is subject to change, so...
I make a motion that we accept it.
Motion.
I'll second that motion.
Discussion.
Can I make one? Because we didn't get, we got through the reopening plan, but also part of the reopening plan is that critical infrastructure for the staff, and I want to make sure that if you have any questions on that, I can answer that. I mean, you're saying that if you have any questions.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Just out of curiosity, in the plan, I noticed that it said that the outside groups that come in will be limited.
Yes.
I know that you're limiting the visitors to coming in, so who's going to be allowed to come in that's from the outside?
Into the school, practically. No, I mean, right now, the only people, like Loudoun City had requested to use our auditorium for meeting, and then they canceled their meeting, but like government agencies...
But no groups, like, there's not going to be like something happening after school that's going to be, I don't know, just a different group that has a bunch of kids coming to the facility?
Don't want to, don't plan to, don't want to contaminate the school building, since we're taking all these efforts to clean it. Now, like, if another government agency needs to use or something, I've typically tried to work with to be a good neighbor.
Are you referring to, like, say, AAU basketball, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, it's just where they, because those kids are going to be, I mean, those could be kids from a different school that comes into that school.
They got canceled already for this year.
So, just anything that in relation to...
The board can tell me what they want to do with that. I put it in there to give some flexibility, but I serve at the pleasure of the board. So if you want to say no groups, you can say no groups until you decide to vote differently.
I was just thinking of kids.
Just my opinion, I think with all the effort they put into this, I don't think Mike will, hey, let somebody come in, it shouldn't come in. Yeah, I agree with that. It'll be his decision.
And I mean, if someone requests, if, before I make approval for someone to come in, I can also run that by the board chair, so it's an executive committee action, if you'd prefer that, too. If you want another layer beyond me, I mean, I'm fine with that. Like I said, I'm easy to get along with, whatever you guys want.
And in your plan, it says that the masks are recommended but are optional, correct?
Yes, recommended but not required. Recommended, one that can be worn appropriately, which is, you know, one of the big concerns, without touching and good hygiene, and yeah. But yeah, they aren't required, they're recommended in this plan. I don't want you to say my plan in this plan. There's things in here I don't necessarily agree with either, but it's the best plan for our kids.
Cafeteria workers, when they're opening milk and stuff like that for the kids, how's that? All workers.
The cafeteria workers themselves are wearing masks, they're required to do that anyway, correct? Allison, as far as the food preparation and things like that, as far as the people helping the kids at the tables, if they're within a really close proximity, they need to wear a mask to protect themselves.
Do they have to wear gloves, change them out every time they're opening up a different kid's drink, or how's that work?
I don't see that as, if they want to, they can, but I'm not going to require that. I mean, whatever, whatever makes them feel comfortable will have gloves available.
Well, the drinks will come from the same location. That's not point if, say, the teacher added, or the kids got whatever disease, are they going to eat child's milk that they're touching?
And we're hoping that the kids that are there are healthy, because we've done the pre-screening, and I know that there are asymptomatic, and that you're not going to catch all of them, yeah. But that's, I mean, if they want to wear gloves, I'm perfectly fine with that. I mean, that goes back to the choice. I mean, if you want me to require them to wear gloves, I can, if that's what the board wants to do.
You have to change gloves every time if you want, I mean, you can just, you can just keep opening up, opening up, opening up. I mean...
Is the plan somebody's reasonable as we can get?
Yeah.
Well, you're, I mean, I feel you, I mean, we're not going to be 100% no matter what we do, is what Scotty's saying, he's right.
Well, I would say that I do cafeteria duty, just to kind of ease your mind, and the kids, well, the kindergarten kids will say, open my milk, and I always say, do you see the arrow? Fine.
That's good.
That's me. And that's a kindergarten.
Well, I mean, because they have to learn, because if I open it, I have to open it every time.
If they try and they can't get it open, you have one stab.
It takes a whole lot. If they can't get it open, I'm going to open it.
I can see...
All right, anything else?
Motion, motion on the floor.
Dr. Robb. I'd like to make a couple comments if I can. I'm sure you've all noticed that I've had my mask on until just a moment ago, and I wanted to say something, and I figured I'd be awfully muffled with it on, which presents one of the problems right there for wearing masks. We're in the midst of a real dilemma. There's no good answer to what we're dealing with. We're dealing with a situation in schools where we always have had a tremendous amount of contact with each other. That's just the nature of the schools, the way we've designed our buildings, the way we set up classrooms. It's not very convenient for the pandemic that's going on right now. I wish I could agree with what many of you are saying, that let's just make masks optional. But we're dealing with lives, we're not dealing with just the quality of education. We're dealing with lives at this particular point. And the scientific evidence that I'm aware of, that I listen to, says that masks do make a difference. They don't solve the problem completely, but they do make a difference. When masks are used, there's a lower infection rate and a lower death rate. Now, now we're dealing with lives, we're not just dealing with education. I feel that we should ask teachers to wear masks or shields and teach with those, setting an example that that is probably the best way to reduce the infections that are going to take place. Now, I've talked to Mike about this, he and I have disagreed on it, but I wanted to state my position and what I think would be best. I think no matter what we do, we run a very high chance of not making it through this school year. I would see us having to shut down again during the school year, should the infection rate begin to move our direction. If you were in California, or Arizona, or Texas, or Florida right now, you're not going to make it through the school year, I don't believe. And I think we run a high risk if we don't take every precaution we can of having the same thing happen to us. That's all.
Anyone else? Kayla, would you roll call that?
Mr. Ebbin?
Yes.
No, no. Right there. I'm going to vote no on that.
Mr. Sommen?
Yes.
Mr. Newman?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Moffett?
Yes.
Ms. Bridges?
Yes.
Mr. Rodding?
All right, Director's report. No, Dr. Ebbin. Kilch in, or is he...
Take this off again. You can put it back on. I probably can't for what I have to say. The legislature was not very active this year to our benefit at all. There was really only one piece of legislation that affected us significantly, and that was taking away the 2% increase for teacher salaries. And that was pulled out of the governor's budget and was passed in the legislature without that piece in there. Chad talked earlier about having to take the $240,000 back out of our budget that had been put in there, because that had been in the governor's budget earlier. So that was the basic change, and the only thing of real significance that took place, I think, in the legislature this year.
The county commission didn't vote for our teachers yet.
They did not, and that's right.
Gary Whitfield did it back here. Not that I would call anybody out. Thank you, yes. Forget about the things.
It's always nice to be loved.
That's all, Dr. Robb.
As I said earlier, there's no perfect plan, there's no solution for this for everyone. I hope that we can start school, and I hope we can continue school. It's my desire not to have a district-wide closure, or I will adhere to the authorities above me. If the governor tells me to close, I will close. If the Department of Health tells me to close, I will close. But we will try, we have set up a plan to where if we do end up with some positive cases within the school, like there have been all over the community, then the Department of Health will work with them to contact trace. Those students will be isolated for the quarantine for the days, will provide them with some remote instruction, and we'll keep school open to the best of our ability. But again, those will be communications that we have with the Department of Health. But I want you to know that it is my goal for us to stay open, to keep kids in school. I think that's what's best for the community and what's best for our kids at this point. And this has been very challenging. My staff has worked nonstop. My short staff, since remember, we're still short one, has been working nonstop, and we will continue to do that on the continuous learning plan. And I will need to, as I said, we'll need to have another board meeting two weeks from tonight on July the 23rd to address the continuous learning plan. If anything else comes between now and then relative to school opening, I'll, you know, I'll update you to that. I try to keep you updated along the way anyway, but I'll let you know that. Again, I'm proud of our staff. Like I said, we've hit about 170,000 meals. We will continue to feed. Our last feeding will be July the 22nd, and then we'll take the one week there before school starts to get our kitchens and everything. And I appreciate Ms. Allison, Allison May, every day of the week. She's up before the sun gets up packing food with her cafeteria staff, either at Fort Loudon Mill or Highland Park, and she just went above and beyond as far as our bus drivers volunteering and things like that. So, I appreciate what our staff has done. This is challenging for everyone. It's challenging for parents, it's challenging for teachers, it's challenging for us. It's against my nature to not be able to solve things, and this I cannot solve, and it's driving me crazy not to know that I have the perfect way to fix this. But I feel like we've got the best that we can offer within the constraints we're given. And I think, I want to thank this board, because you didn't have to approve a quarter of a million dollars for me to improve the conditions above what we're already doing. Anybody can write anything in a plan, and we could just wrote in there that will increase sanitation, and we could say our contractor's going to increase sanitation. But I mean, you put the money behind it to show that we're actually doing that, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate this board for what you do. The last thing I have is I have a new special education director, Mr. Josh Reese. If he'll stand up, I'd like to introduce him to the board. He started with us July the 1st, so I think he's going to be a great asset. I stole him from Anderson County, so he is...
That took some work.
That took some work, but I think he will be a great asset to our team, and I appreciate him joining our team moving forward.
Welcome.
Welcome. You know, when Tinker started here, he had flowing lots of air. That's what I was just saying. It's hard, old man.
I just ask everybody to be patient with us. I mean, it's going to be challenging, starting schools is going to be challenging, car lines are going to be challenging, everything's going to be challenging for a couple of weeks so we can, till our schools can get in the grooves of things, but I just ask for patience.
Can I ask you a question?
I'm done.
I just wanted to address the mask thing. As most of you know, I'm a man of science, I work at Y-12. I've been in the nuclear field, and I've worked around alpha radiation a good bit in my career. The man's very accurate in the micron levels that he cited. What I don't understand about it is, is that these masks somehow seem to be knocking down the sneezes and the droplets to the point where the good doctor was accurate. It's working somehow. I also was a seventh grade young boy over there, and I can tell you right now, I wouldn't either. I can tell you right now, I wouldn't. All I can say is, I hope a lot of our teachers will consider using maybe the face shields. Just think about it, what I'm saying here, there's, you can jump on either side of this argument, and I know that you're right what you said about the micron level, you're absolutely accurate there. But for some reason, the droplets seem to be knocking it down with the mask, so I consider using it, is all I'm saying, and that's it for Air Force.
My heart already kept the sheriff's department. I was thinking, we were talking about car pickup at Eaton's, how much more traffic is going to be slowed down out there.
You are correct, and I will, and we are, Mr. Safety Director Tinker is working with Ms. Basler. We are looking, at least when school starts, to see how it works, the parking directly in front of the awning at the school and the turnaround, we're going to eliminate that parking, and we're going to do two lanes to increase the speed going through there as well. So, we're trying to adapt as we move forward. It may work, it may not work, but we're trying to do what we can to improve it. I will reach out.
And then, how many teachers did we have? We don't have a lot of teachers left that we have to replace this year, do we?
About the normal amount.
One to take it out of bag?
Yeah. Now, I will say that I sent out today as part of the Corona Act, I sent out the employee rights today. Most of those, just so the teachers are aware, a lot of things aren't covered under, I mean, it'd be like FMLA if someone wanted to take off, but they will, if anyone's concerned, they can contact the HR department. Ms. Teuton will walk them through their options on what they need. Like I said, we'll see how we go moving forward with the continuous learning plan and the virtual piece when we start looking at numbers and see what we got. Again, that may be additional costs in staffing, but we'll bring that back to the board when you get ready to approve that plan and tell me which direction to go. We're trying to do what's best for kids and try to do it in the most, the best way we can, so...
If we hadn't made a take on that offer, where you offered them, if they didn't want to be at the school, they can take that FMLA leave or whatever?
Well, it's, it's, the federal requirements around that essentially, five of the six categories, you get two weeks. So, I mean, if they did take it, they would just miss the first two weeks of school, and then they'd have to come back, and it would take, you know, underlying health conditions or things like that to trigger FMLA, not the, so the Corona, the COVID is really more built around, like what Kim was talking about earlier, if they actually are, you know, showing symptoms and getting tested, or if they actually get it, then they don't have to use their sick leave, that would kick in. So, that's the piece, like what Kim was talking about, that we communicated that, but there are some pieces with it where, you know, if schools close or childcare centers are closed, then some of those kicks in for, again, it's two weeks up to 10 weeks. There's nothing that would do the whole year, so, but I'm trying to get an idea on staffing just to make sure we're covered in, and we won't have as many substitutes available this year. We won't be doing as much pullout professional development this year because we won't have subs. It's going to alter the way we normally do our school year, just because we won't have the backup stuff in that we normally have. If I end up having to do a closure, it will more likely be because I can't staff the school, not because we've got a case or two in the school.
What do you do if you don't have?
And that's where that critical infrastructure come in there, because if they're showing symptoms, they're not going to be at work, but if they were just exposed and not showing symptoms, then they would come to work wearing a mask like, you know, like everybody else that's considered essential, like Scotty and healthcare workers and the Food City folks, you know, all those folks that are being exposed, but if they're showing symptoms, they won't be there.
I just mean, if we don't have a sub, what are you going to do for that classroom?
Tinker's going to figure, Tinker's going to figure that out when the time comes.
He can fill him. He's good in the classroom.
Did state relax the requirement?
Thank you, Phil. Phil had asked if the state relaxed the requirement. I filed a waiver with the state to, where they wouldn't hold us, I have not heard back yet. So, if they deny my waiver, we may have to hire two PE teachers on top of everything else, yeah. But I did apply for a waiver for that and a few other things, so, but I haven't heard, I don't know when I'm going to hear back. And just to share my concern about things, you know, I'm asking you to meet in two weeks to approve our continuous learning plan because it has to be submitted the next day on the 24th. They won't tell me if I've got approval until August the 17th, which is actually two weeks after we started school. So, we'll be starting school, hope that, that's why we're communicating with the state now, trying to get a feel for, you know, is this going to make it, or is this not going to make it, because I don't want to be surprised on the end, you know, but you're still running a little bit of a risk with that to get the state approval. So, the timelines that they've got aren't very conducive to what they're asking us